Good evening. At this time, if you will please silence your cellphones. Be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers, if you desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They're available at the front entrance and presented to the city clerk. Speakers that are participating via Zoom as well as those in person will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. Our city clerk will make a Zoom broadcasting announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 831-3430-7721, and enter password number 136194. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the city council of the City of Grand Terrace for Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. We will be closing our meeting tonight in memory of San Bernardino County Sheriff Sergeant Dominic Vaca. And immediately following the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Robles has a few words to say in his memory. So at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation. It will be offered by Mayor Protem Villhussie, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Lieutenant Brian Lane of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department.
Please bow your heads and join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you, thank you, God, for everything you have done for this city. We are truly blessed with our residents and our city staff here, God, and our first responders who are always protecting us of all hours of the day. Lord, I just ask that you give this council wisdom, guidance, and the knowledge it needs to do your Lord's will, God, and as we make the decisions on your Lord's will, that it's the right decisions that will benefit all residents here in the City of Grand Terrace. Lord, we love you, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Councilmember Robles, would you say a few words about Dominic Vaca?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. During the Labor Day weekend, Dominic Vaca, deputy from the Morongo Basin, serving the Morongo Basin, was fatally shot and killed in Yucca Valley. I didn't know Dominic. I grew up with his father, David, and David did live sometime in Grand Terrace. The last time I saw his father was at an Easter meeting at Gilbert and Stephanie Rodriguez's house, and it occurred to me that a huge number of us that grew up in San Bernardino and grew up with David would want to give their condolences to the sheriff's family and to his family. He left a 11-year-old and a four-month-old baby. It's very humbling that someone like him would want to serve and protect us. And just in closing, you know, my grandparents were friends with the Vaca family. My grandparents ran a dry cleaning tailor shop in Edmonds, California, and the Vaca family had vodka cleaners on Seventh Street in San Bernardino and traditionally Mexican-American West Side, and I just want to send my deepest condolences on behalf of the Grand Terrace residents to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hesse.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We do not have any special presentations. So we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by city council at one time without any discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we will open public comment. Do we have any requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to public hearings, of which we have one. It's item six on your agenda, 2021, 2022 Landscape and Lighting District, 81-1, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution, ordering the levy and collection of assessments therefore, and approval of agreements with the county for collection thereof. So what we will do is, I'm going to ask at this time, have there been any ex parte communications, or are there any conflict of interest or need to recuse at this time? All right, seeing none, we will have a staff presentation. And I see Ms. Shanita Tillman, Management Analyst.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Magna Bo, Mayor Protem, and City Council, Shanita Tillman, Management Analyst. I'll wait on the PowerPoint. The staff report before you supports the following goal. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. In 1989, city council required developers to create an assessment district for maintaining landscaping and lighting, and the city formed, excuse me, the city formed Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 89-1. Since then, there have been five annexations totaling seven different tracts, each track being a zone within the district. Each year, an engineer's report is prepared for the assessment. The engineer's report, prepared by Willdan, is included in your staff report. On May 25th, council approved resolutions to initiate proceedings to levy annual assessments for the 21-22 fiscal year and prepare and preliminarily approve the engineer's report prepared by Willdan Financial. The following will be an overview of the seven tracts within our city. For each zone, the various costs are indicated along with a maximum assessment. Zone 1, Track 13364, Canal. Zone 2, Track 14264, 4-City, Phase 2. Zone 3, Track 14471, Oriole. Zone 4, Track 17766, Greenbrier. Zone 5, Track 18793, Palomino. Zone 6, Track 18071, Jaden. And lastly, Zone 7, Track 18604, Tesoro and Van Buren. At this time, staff is recommending council conduct the public hearing, the adoption of a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the City of Grand Terrace Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2021-2022. And lastly, approve the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector agreements for the collection of special taxes, fees, and assessments for districts, for the district and city for fiscal year 21-22. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have representatives from Willdan on the line, as well as the Public Works Director, Robert Eisenweis.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. All right, before I open the public hearing, does council have any questions of staff? All right. All right, Councilmember Allen.
Hi, thank you for that. That was a really good report, and I appreciate that, but my question to you is, have you had any correspondence from any of the members of, any of the residents of any of these lighting districts?
No, there have been none.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, I will open the public hearing to allow public testimony. Is there anybody at this time that would like to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council to deliberate on this item. Any discussion? Councilmember Allen.
Hi, Mayor. Do you need a motion to continue discussion? If you do, I'll give the motion to approve the recommendations.
All right, thank you.
I'll second for sake of discussion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Councilmember Robles. Any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Onto unfinished business. We have this matter of a fiscal year 2021-22 budget to wade through. So at this time, we will continue our deliberations. Do we have a staff report for this item, Mr. City Manager Harold G. Harold Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call it up in just a second. Okay, so as the mayor indicated, this is the continuation of the deliberation of proposed budget. I am prepared to go through the presentation to remind the council of the information that we covered the last time. I can skip through some material that will be repetitive, and so we can get down to the actual deliberations. And so before the council tonight, you will see a new budget book, the green book that we have given you, and there are a number of edits within that book. We can quickly go through those, starting at page 28. There was a correction in terms of the interns that are listed are part-time. There was an incorrect note in the original document. Page 40 is a correction of a title. Page 55 is a correction of the, we had a duplicate page, it was supposed to be the management information systems, and we had an emergency operations plan there, so we corrected that. Page 58 is a correction for the light-up Grand Terrace. We put $10,000 in that program for the year in terms of expenditure summary, also the same for the Community Day. And then page 65 was a correction, just add a little more information on the makeup of the Historical and Cultural Committee. Page 68. It's not page 68, I'm sorry, excuse me. And there's page 66, where we, the Historical and Cultural Committee actually had a lockbox that had $1,800 in it, and so we were moving that money over into this new year. Page 73, this was probably the most significant change that we had, that we had made. What our goal was in this year was to add an additional senior accountant to the Budget Office and Finance Department, but we had already had a budget officer, and, but we have two senior accountants sitting in the position, one is sitting in the budget officer position. So when we added the additional senior accountant, we thought, everyone thought that it was just three senior accountants, because this year we have one senior accountant and one budget officer. And so we want to roll that over to next year and just add one more senior accountant. And so you'll see on the sheet, you'll see Budget Officer 1.0 and Senior Accountant 2.0. And that reflects about a $7,400, I mean, I'm sorry, about a $7,400 change in our numbers. Packet page 88, I mean, sorry, not packet page 88, but the budget book 88, there was a correction in making sure that we had the correct animal control department that provides us contract services.
But they provide shelter services, not so much animal control. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
We will make that correction. And then we had on page 89, we had a correction in terms of when we have fireworks in the city, when they have the legalized firework stands, there is an amount of money which they provide as part for security services, for services. So we actually received $3,500 for that expense to reimburse our sheriff's contract services. And then on packet page, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on the budget book page 94, there was an edit and correction in terms of the park maintenance. And then on 95 was a correction, properly naming Veterans Freedom Park as it is, not Pico Park. 94, that was probably 94, yes, and 95, and then we have 107. We just had a little more information regarding the services for the sheriff's department. 116 was intergovernmental revenue and grants, and the finance director might have to help me out with this particular one. Terry, on 116?
116. It says special revenue, intergovernmental grants. 116 of the budget book. We'll come back to that, Terry, find that.
And I believe 118 was the final change, and that was another intergovernmental grant. I believe that those, I think we are including that revenue that was missed, the original view.
Mr. Shea, you want to come to the lectern and tell us about pages 116 and 118?
Which page first?
116.
The 350,000?
Yes.
And the 725?
I'd have to get my backup, but I don't have that with me. I'm not sure what that is.
Okay. It looks like it's, if it's intergovernmental revenue and grants, and we had, I don't have my other book with me either. Can we?
I'd have to get my original backup. I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, so we'll come back to that, and actually, page 118 also, it's another intergovernmental grant. So these are revenues?
That's the peg fees that we get from the cable companies.
Okay, great.
How are we showing the 1.15 million that we are getting in federal aid from the American Recovery Plan Act?
We are not, Mayor, in this budget at this time, when that, when we applied for that, when we get the okay, we will come back to the council with requests for appropriations and also to accept that grant. We just applied for it yesterday. They opened it up last week, and it was relatively simple. We'll get the 1.15 million this year and another 1.15 million next year.
Okay, so the numbers in our budget do not rely on that.
That is correct.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Wilson.
What kind of restrictions do we have on those?
On the 1.15 million? So, so far, they have been pretty liberal in terms of, you can look at your existing budget from last year and look at if you've lost revenue, you can supplant that. You can use it for economic development purposes, and you can also use it for utilities like infrastructure for sewer, storm drains, and broadband. That's right, yeah. And so as we look at our, as we look at our budget, one of the options that we have is if you pull out the pool and you look at our OR numbers, and they're less than it was the previous year, then we are able to use, to backfill that without the pool. We actually benefited from the pool this year. We went from $50,000 to, I think, $125,000 in the pool. So we can look at it that way, and they're being pretty liberal in terms of economic development. And so we could do another program like we did the last time, loans to small businesses, assistance with restaurants, there's multiple helping small businesses, at-home businesses, there's like a menu of items that we will bring back to the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Say, regarding those intergovernmental revenues and grants, because on 119, there's another one for 239, and I was, the...
That's the RMRA tax that we, SB 2, SB 1, and I think we had something on the consent calendar for those items.
But as far as the one on page 116, you don't know what?
Off the get.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, I think we do, Mayor. So, Mayor, looking at packet page, looking at page 116 from the proposed budget and looking at 116 from the updated budget, the proposed budget had a negative of $346,000, and that was because there was a federally funded program that we had not received the reimbursements for. And so in this book, we actually count it as the reimbursements being there. And so that's why it is, the adjustment has changed from a negative $346,000 to a positive $3,125.
Okay.
And I'm sorry about that delay.
It's all right. Any further questions? All right, I'll open public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for further deliberations and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen.
I have a question for the presenter. The Cal Recycle Grant Fund, where is that? Do we have any part of that? And what page would that, do we show any of that on, if we have a grant from them? Or is that one of those intergovernmental grants?
It would be one of the intergovernmental grants.
Right.
But let's see if we can find out exactly where it is. I'm sure you asked that.
It's on page 128 of the budget book. We don't have anything planned for it this year, but it is, that's the fund, it's Fund 66.
Okay. My concern with that is, is that SB 1383, that's going to require us to comply with the state measures by January of next year, and that's six months from now, and those are pretty stringent requirements, pretty expensive requirements, you know, and it would be cool if we could use that fund for, because that's what it's for.
Yeah, and so Councilman Allen, one of the things that the city has is a franchise agreement with Bertec Waste Industry, and in that franchise agreement, they are to implement the programs that are put on by the state. And so they are actually, they will come to us with their proposal, and I believe they're already working with staff on how to comply with that food waste organic process. And it is a daunting task to provide every household with a bucket or something to be able to put the food waste in, and then bring it out to the curb, and then collect it separately in a separate truck. They're trying to find multiple ways to work on that. There's also, just recently, I received yesterday, a letter from the League of California Cities trying to support legislation that would eliminate the ability for the Cal Recycle to fine the cities, I think it's up to $7,000 a day if they're not in compliance. And the league is saying that the amount of time given to the cities to comply isn't enough time, and they should be citing of finding people at this time. So I will be bringing that forward and through our process of getting the council to support that.
You're referring to 619, I believe, SB 619, that would delay the penalties.
Right.
Right, and, oh, yeah, absolutely. We need to support that. Thank you.
All right, so we have a budget before us. What do we want to do with it? Do we have issues that we want staff to come back with? Are we happy with it how it is?
Well, I'm happy that it's balanced, you know.
I just wanted to say, I'm fairly comfortable with the budget. I think it was 2010 when the elimination of RDAs required the city to do some drastic downsizing. We've been limping along ever since. I mean, we had, at a point that there were so many staff leaving, we had, I don't know how many city clerks in my first, you know, year. I think it's time to give the city manager as much staff personnel to, as a baseline, and see what we can do. So I support it.
Okay. Supported enough to... Supported enough to make a motion to approve it?
Yes.
All right. Excellent.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. And I know that Councilmember Wilson is out of the room. Hopefully, he is doing okay. But since we do have a quorum, if there's no further discussion, please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Could I say one thing about the budget?
No.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Shea, please do.
I just want to thank Christine and Brenda in finance, and those are two of the best finance department employees I've seen in my 40 years, so to get them help would be great, so.
Oh, that's wonderful. So, there wasn't so much about the budget as it was about the staff that helped put this together, and so that's always welcome. Thank you very much for saying so.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right.
Okay, I have an issue.
Uh-oh.
I'm locked out.
Uh-oh, Councilmember Robles.
So, I don't recall, other than the first two applicants that applied. Do we have the applications for historical?
There are, there should be six attached to your staff report.
Oh, but I can't get off.
She's locked out.
Oh. So. Yeah, and then I forgot my phone that has my passcode and I don't remember how to dial out, too. Okay, thank you.
All right, so that was a precursor to item number eight on your agenda, which is the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee Member Appointments and Process. Mrs. Deborah Thomas, City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, Members of Council, for the record, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. As you know, we have been before you regarding the vacancies of the Historical and Cultural Committee, of which we have seven vacancies. The council had directed the City Clerk's office to advertise and publish those vacancies, of which we have received six applications. Currently, we've received applications from Frankie Beima, Renee Walker, Mary Beth Carrera, Michelle Greer, Becky Drew, and Louise Lundstrom. Invitations were sent out to these individuals to attend tonight's meeting. Not all are able to have attended. But we do have a few. We have Renee, Ms. Walker and Ms. Drew here. Additionally, one of the items that we wanted to bring back at a later date and get your approval is to consolidate the rules and procedures for the committee. Those rules and procedures are located in two or three different locations and we'd like to consolidate them into one resolution, but that can be brought back at a later time. So, at this time, the recommendation is that each council member nominate an applicant from the six applications received. Upon selection of those nominees, the mayor shall appoint, subject to the city council approval, those nominees to the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee and that the mayor appoint, subject to city council approval, the remaining applicant as an at-large Historical and Cultural Activities Committee member, as we have received six applicants. And there are five council members. And lastly, direct staff to prepare an item consolidating all rules and procedures governing the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee for the city council's consideration and approval at a future meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there questions at this time? Councilmember Allen?
So, I just want to be clear on the, for myself, about the selection process. So, each of us will select one of the applicants and then we will nominate them. Is, I understand that correctly? Madam Clerk?
Yes, you would just select an individual as your appointee.
As, oh, as our appoint, oh, so, so we're not going to vote on all of them, we just, or huh?
Well, you would just select an individual as your appointee. We can go through each, each of everybody, just to, this is my appointee, the mayor will select the remaining individual at large, and then vote on the appointment of all at once.
And so, can I just elaborate on this? So, this is the original process for this particular committee, where each council member is to appoint a member to the committee, and then you have two members that are at large. However, over the years, it's varied, and so, we're trying to get it back to where, where the rules, and they're in different places, as the city clerk says, basically where the rules are that the council, each council member has a right to appoint who they want to be on the Historical and Cultural Committee. And then the council as a whole can appoint two members at large. And so, from now on, we will be going through that process after you make the selection tonight.
So, to, this would lead me to one more question. And, you know, not that I foresee this happening or hope that it, or even think that it would, but if five of the committee members are, and each one, five of those seven committee members are an appointee from one of us, then in the event that things don't work out and the removal process, does it require that same council member to initiate that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Another council member would not be able to initiate that?
That is correct.
Right. So, okay. And if that council member, and if the council member, if one of the council members does not, decides not to run for reelection or does, is not reelected, then does that committee member then lose their seat on the committee also?
No.
That, no, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. No, it would just be when a successor would be appointed, that that person would continue still on, and the individual that would replace the council member, that who no longer sits on the council, that would ultimately be their appointee as well.
Okay.
But they could probably remove them and replace them if they really wanted to. All right, so my suggestion is that I just do a roll call of all the council members, they tell me who they'd like to appoint, and then we vote on it as a slate, just to affirm it. Does that sound, does that sound right? All right. Mr. City Attorney, does that sound right to you?
Sounds perfect. I don't know if you want to have any public comment before you take that action.
Probably.
Yeah.
Because that would be the regular order of things, right? So, do we have any further questions at this point? All right, so we'll open it up for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, you had a question. Mayor Protem.
[inaudible].
Right, and I imagine they'll come during public comment. No, that's okay. That's all right. We have applicants who would like to make statements?
Yes, we have Ms. Becky Drew.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, residents of Grand Terrace.
Can you hear me now?
That's better. I could hear you before, but that's a whole lot better.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide my application to serve on this committee. I look forward to continuing traditions of Grand Terrace with the many events that we do. So, I've been involved with a few of them, 40th Birthday Party, Community Days, and so I would look forward to serving on that if you appoint me to it.
Thank you, Ms. Drew.
Thank you.
And we have Ms. Renee Walker.
Good evening. I'm going to keep this really short. I don't speak very well in public, but I am honored to be considered and that you are reviewing my application, and I look forward to helping Grand Terrace grow and really take a look at our history.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their appointments. We will begin with Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey.
I'd like to appoint Becky Drew.
Okay. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Mary Beth Carrera.
All right. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Louise Lundstrom.
I'm sorry, Louise Lundstrom.
All right. Councilmember Jeff Allen?
I'd like to nominate Renee Walker.
Okay. And I'm going to nominate Frankie Beima. And then also for at-large, we will, I believe, Michelle Greer is left, and I would like to have her appointed as well. And so, we will move the whole slate of, of the applicants. Is there a motion for the whole slate?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I just wanted to say thank you so much to the two of you that showed up tonight. That was so wonderful of you to be here, and I'm looking forward to this new slate of, of Historical and Cultural Committee members and all the wonderful things that you're going to do for the city. Thank you so much. Mayor Protem?
My question, this is all around, but the people, the ladies and the gentlemen who are on the Historical Committee, are we going to do any special presentation for them for all their hard work? Or did they already do that?
Well, we got, we sent them letters of thank you.
Okay.
But we can do something more if, if that is desired.
We can do something anytime that you want. Currently, our next scheduled recognition for all of our volunteers would be April of 2022, but we could certainly schedule something sooner for, for the committee itself, if you would like.
I'm thinking maybe the current slate of Historical and Cultural Activities Committee members could come up with a nice way to thank those that served for so many years.
Excellent idea.
We can have that discussion at their first meeting.
There you go. Something on the agenda already.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we'll move to item nine, which is approval of annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2021, 2022, including adoption of the price factor and population change factor for the appropriations limit calculation. Mr. Terry Shea, interim finance director.
Yes, sir. Could I get the clicker, Mr.? What you have here is the appropriations limit for fiscal year 21, 22. Appropriations limit was established in 1979 by the California voters, approved the GAN spending limitation, Prop 4, establishing Article 13B of the state constitution. It sets the limits on the amount of tax revenues that the state and most local governments can appropriate within a given fiscal year. Each year, the state and local governments must adopt a resolution establishing an appropriations limit known as the GAN limit. So, the first fiscal year was 1984, 85, and then the factors are applied to that number each year. Only tax proceeds are subject to the limit, charges for services, regulatory fees, grants, loans, donations are not. All tax revenues received in excess of the appropriations limit must be refunded to taxpayers within a two-year period, and I've only seen one city ever refund, so.
Does that apply to the state as well?
State as well, yes. So, the calculation is based on two factors. It's the change in the cost of living is defined to be either the change in California per capita, personal income, or the change in assessed valuation due to the addition of non-residential new construction. That second number is not available as of yet, so we're going to go with the change in the per capita, which is 5.73. And the other one is the change in population is defined as either a change in the city's population or a change in the county's population, whichever is greater. From 2020 to 2021, per the DOF, Grand Terrace's population dropped 0.07 percent, and the county of San Bernardino increased 0.17, so we use the 0.17. This is kind of hard to see, but if you look at the top line, that's the total revenue per the budget, less non-proceeds of tax, which is 6 million, so our total appropriations subject to the limit are 5,346, which is the proceeds of taxes in this current budget that's coming up. So, our fiscal year 2021 appropriation limit was 15,262. We take those factors and it increased by that 901,000 for a new number of 16,164. Remaining appropriations subject capacity are 10.8 million, so we're about, we're just a little under, a little over 10.8 million below the limit. So, just adopt the resolution. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Questions of staff at this time? All right, seen none. Open public comment, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and further deliberation.
Move approval of the annual appropriations limits for fiscal year 2021, including adoption of the price factor and population change factor for the appropriations limit calculation.
Second is presented.
All right, motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 10 is commitment of fund balance for fiscal year 2021 in accordance with governmental accounting standards, Board Statement 54 and City Reserves Policy Number 3.06. Again, Mr. Terry Shea, interim finance director.
Yes, this is GASB 54, which is fund balance designation, which must be adopted by June 30th, '21, to be effective for the 2021 audit. And so, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB issued Statement, it should be 54, sorry, which modified fund balance reporting. Fund balance refers to the difference between assets, what the city owns, and liabilities, what the city owes. So, designations, the first one is non-spendable, and includes principal endowment fund, developer deposits, prepaid's, or if you have land. Restricted is funds restricted for specific purpose, such as gas tax for roads, development impact fees and bond proceeds, and those are usually external by a law not set by council. And then you have committed, which for our plan is that only the city council can commit, and so those are for contingencies, community services, public safeties, capital assets. And then assigned, and the council policy has given the city manager or his, or the finance director can assign fund balance, and then unassigned, and that's per the city's policy. So, these are the funds that we're dealing with, which would be the general fund, and then these other five funds or six funds make up a portion of the general fund as well. So, the required fund balance per the city's policy for the rainy day fund, the contingency, is either the higher of the revenues or, we've been using revenues the last couple of years, so the projected revenues for 630, '21 are 6,276,466, divided by 12, times two, that gives us 1,046 for contingency or rainy day fund. So, you can see, this is kind of history of the general fund, so beginning 7/118, we had 3.3 million, revenues 5.9, and expenses, so we went down to 3.2. Then that 3.2 in 1920, 6.5 in revenues, 6.1 in expenses, and 3.6. And so, the estimated where I think we're going to end this year is, is that far right column, which is 3.7, which agrees to a page in the budget you just adopted. So, basically, that public works restriction, that was the balance of the bond funds that were used for projects, and that was just a little under 2 million, so rounded up. And then at the end of 2021, it's 1.1 million contingencies. We were a little below the projections last year, based on the GASB 54, but this year, you remember that 0.06, 1.06 was our number, 1046. So, for this year, we're at 1.05, and so we will meet the city's reserve policy of the two months' revenues. So, any questions on these two items of fund balance? And these numbers will be reflected in the June 30, '21 audit report. And then that's it. Any questions?
Questions at this time? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and deliberations if necessary. Actually, I did have one question. What is GASB 64?
FASB.
I know, but you had it on your mind. What is it?
I have no idea.
Is there a GASB 64?
They're up to 105 now, so.
Okay.
But when I started, GASB didn't exist, and FASBs were only to 20, and now they're over 102, so.
Okay. All right, so are there, is there a consideration of a motion on this item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of the city council, the city of Grand Terrace, California, committing fund balance.
of Grand Terrace, California, committing fund balance for fiscal year 202021 in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 54 and City Reserves Policy Number 3.06.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Any further discussion on this item? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have any requests for future agenda items, so we'll move to council communications. Councilmember Jeff Allen?
I don't have anything, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, and Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey?
Well, I have a little something. Since I didn't get to partake into the community cleanup in April, I was asked by Councilmember Dr. G. from Colton if we wanted to do a joint effort on a Saturday. Well, he asked me that like two months ago, and I actually forgot all about it. Anyway, we did a joint little cleanup. He had a couple of people, and I had a couple of people, and we cleaned up a lot of trash on Locketina between Barton and Linton, so, you know, it was a nice joint effort for both of those cities to get together and clean up that area. I don't think the trash has been picked up there for a while. We found a lot of interesting stuff, but I want to thank our city staff for supplying the gloves and also coming out there and picking up the six big, huge trash piles of trash, so thank you, Mr. Duffy, and tell the staff thank you. And it was a little hot out there that day, so. I thought it'd be a cooler day, but it wasn't. It was Saturday. I missed McDonald, I mean, the Taco Bell opening.
Yeah, see, the last one was probably a cooler day. Well, that was wonderful that you all got out there and cleaned up. Thank you very much. And so I will say hello to Scott Ward from Supervisor Don Row's office. Thank you for being here tonight. And I have just one item. It has to do with Coachella Valley Rail Project, and you probably wonder what that has to do with Grand Terrace, but the Riverside County Transportation Commission is exploring the idea of a passenger rail service from Los Angeles Union Station to Coachella Valley, and the path that they want to take will come through Grand Terrace.
Interesting.
Yes, so they completed the draft Tier One environmental document, which is now out for public review. They do not plan on stopping in Grand Terrace, or Colton, or Loma Linda, Redlands are on their way out. So if you are interested in reviewing, you may have an opportunity to submit comments. There's a public hearing that they held tonight from 6:00 PM until 8:00, but there is a second public hearing on Saturday, June 26th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and maybe we can get the Zoom link out on our website, on the Facebook page and all that, because I think it would be a good idea. Otherwise, there's a HTTPS, www regulations.gov/document/fra, and a whole bunch of numbers. Maybe that'd be a good one to have on our website as well. Please, please, take some time to look at this. It may or may not have a huge impact on us, but when the trains come through, they are going to be on BNSF tracks. That means there will be more traffic, more pollution, more congestion, and it's really something that we should, we should look at and weigh in on. And that will be my comments for tonight, so we'll move on to city manager communications.
I have none, Mayor.
All right. With that, we will be recessing to closed session. We have three items. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, city manager, Adrian Guerra, city attorney, Colin Tanner, deputy city attorney. Employee organization, Teamsters Local 1932. Unrepresented employees consist of city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, director of public works, director of planning and development services, management analyst, we have two of those positions, principal accountant, and assistant planner. The second item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, Case Sunny Days LLC versus City of Grand Terrace, case number CIVSB 2107692. And the third item is in public employee scheduled performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957.6, title city manager. If you are not here when we come back, please remember that we are closing tonight in the memory of Dominic Vaca. Please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. We will have our next regular city council meeting on Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, so any request to have an item placed on future agenda item must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. All right, this time we are in recess to closed session. All right, we'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session to review three items. The first was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6, no reportable actions. We did give direction to staff. Item number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, no reportable actions. And item number three, public employee scheduled performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The council accepted letter of resignation from G. Harold Duffy, city manager, and his last day will be July 20th, 2021. And with that...
Because he accepted employment somewhere else. We got to clear up the...
We did not ask for his resignation, but he offered it, and we were...
We accepted.
We were, we were forced to accept it because he's leaving on July 20th. That's his last day, so we have accepted his resignation. We will adjourn the regular meeting of the Grand Terrace City Council in memory of San Bernardino County Sheriff's Sergeant Dominic Vaca. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.